Okay, the meeting has come to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to the House of Meeting. Before we get into the approval of the agenda, Mr. Carter has advised us. Just like to ask everyone to remember one of our special teachers at Flatwoods Elementary, Mrs. Doreen Daniels, who passed away this past Saturday. And we would like to ask that you keep her family in your thoughts and your prayers. And certainly she's going to be very sadly missed by the school family and certainly her family at Flatwoods Elementary. Thank you. Okay, the first item of the business is to approve the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. And next is to approve the minutes of April 14th, April 22nd, and April 29th. Meetings, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, next is the recognition part of the agenda. Mr. Carter, first we have FCC LA, Crystal Ely.
Hey, my name is Crystal Ely, and I'm a Family Consumer Science teacher at the Career Center, and I'm also an advisor for FCC LA. This past April, we took thirteen kids to Virginia Beach to compete at the conference. And out of those thirteen, we had seven of them to win Nationals, which Nationals is in Washington DC this summer. And I have five of those seven to here tonight with me to speak to you. The other two were at tennis game, so, or tennis match. So I'm just going to have them come up as they, you know, are, and just show you a little brief description of their presentations that they made at state. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Natasha Gish.
Daniel Wolfer.
As night we competed in Illustrated Talk, our subject was bullying. We chose that subject because bullying is something that affects people's lives every day. We have a friend at school that lost her sister due to being bullied. We saw what she went through, and that made us want to stand up and do something about it. She took her own life at the young age of thirteen.
We placed second with gold as state and also qualified for Nationals. State was such a great experience and look forward to presenting again and representing Lee's FCC LA and the state of Virginia at Nationals in Washington DC.
And I'm Craig Wolfer. And at state, we competed for promote publicized FCC LA. And we just showed the judges the different things we've done in our area to outreach the community, to promote publicized there, lead FCC LA. We showed them the frozen event we done, the No Kid Hungry, Families First, buckle up for FCC LA, all the safety things we've done, and Families First stuff that we've done to bring families closer together. We got first place with gold, and we qualified to compete at Nationals in July in Washington DC. And we're excited to compete there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those two are seniors, and it was the first time they had ever competed with me, and they won first place gold, so they were super excited after they left.
Hello, my name is Katelyn Hitzer, and I'm a member of Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, also known as FCC LA. You may remember me from last year when I talked about how I was going to Nationals with my dress made out of toilet paper. After Nationals was over, I wanted to somehow get involved in helping others. With the help of my advisor, I found a project that was perfect. My project is called No Kid Hungry National Outreach Program. Before starting this project, I had never heard of No Kid Hungry, so I did some research. More than sixteen million kids in America struggle with hunger every day. Sixteen point two million Americans live in poverty. That's one in five. That's equal to the entire population of Spain. This program aims to give food to kids that are growing hungry and teach families how to get affordable meals. It encourages the public to be active in trying to end childhood hunger in America by the end of this year. I helped raise awareness in many ways. One was sending out donor and information cards about how kid hungry at the fair. The donor cards were one dollar each. Everyone that bought a donor card signed it, and with each card collected, there was a bulletin board made of them. Another way of raising money and awareness was by having vague dates throughout the months of September, November, and December. In December, there was a special sale of hot chocolate. Each cup had something written on them. One said, "Over sixteen million kids in America aren't getting enough to eat." There was a goal at the beginning of the project to raise a thousand dollars. With hard work, dedication, and the help of me, the amount was exceeded. The total that was raised was one thousand and ten dollars. The money was all donated to No Kid Hungry. Half of the earnings stayed in Virginia, and the other half went to the entire National Outreach Program. Thank you.
As a member of FCC LA, I would personally like to thank Mr. Carter and the school board members for allowing us to come and speak tonight. I'm a senior, and I'm thoroughly going to miss the opportunities FCC LA has given me. It's been wonderful to see our chapter grow and to be able to get involved in our community like we have. Thank you.
Okay, next is the Virginia School Board Association Art Contest Winner, Dr. Brown.
We were going to recognize the elementary student, Hannah Gill Myers, because she wasn't able to make it last year, but I think she's sick tonight, so she's not allowed to come in at the moment, so we didn't want to recognize her because she was the elementary winner for the division, what they were making.
Thank you. Next is KTM Drawing Cards. Mr. Carter? We have several students this past month that have had their artwork published in the Kingsport Times News Drawing Card Contest. We actually have a newcomer as far as a school. This month, we have a student from Dryden Elementary, Christian Baker, that had his artwork published in the Kingsport Times News Drawing Contest. Elton Knob Elementary again has eight students. We'd like to recognize those. Arthur Baker, Landon Grace, Gracie Dillman, Virgil Hobbs, Kenley Johnson, Cameron Mosley, Eli Sherrick, and Desiree Taylor. So congratulations to all those students and to Ms. Willis for a great job. And Ms. Markham, I think Ms. Markham spearheads that, and we certainly appreciate the job you all do over there for those students getting that artwork published. Thank you. Okay, next is schools with the highest percentage of attendance. Mr. Carter? Again, we have a newcomer to first place tonight. Ms. Willis at Elton Knob Elementary is in first place, ninety-five point six percent. Great. And then, UDL Elementary is a close second at ninety-five point two percent. So we want to congratulate those schools and encourage them to keep up the good work. Okay, next is Teacher of the Year from each school.
Since nineteen sixty-four, Virginia has participated in the Virginia, or in the National Teacher of the Year Program. The Virginia Teacher of the Year Program honors teachers who represent the best in teaching in the Commonwealth of Virginia and the nation. The program provides school divisions the opportunity to recognize outstanding teachers and to focus positive public attention on education and the teaching profession. A teacher must hold a current renewable Virginia teaching license and teach in Virginia public or accredited non-public school in order to be eligible to participate in the Teacher of the Year Program. Candidates should be teachers who are exceptionally skilled and dedicated and who are planning to continue in an active teaching status. Teachers should have the respect and admiration of students, parents, and colleagues. They should play an active and meaningful role in their communities as well as in their schools. And tonight, we want to take this opportunity to recognize some of Lee County's best, finest, and most effective teachers. So at this time, if the chairman will join me on the floor, we will recognize each of the schools that have chosen the Teacher of the Year from their colleagues, and certainly that's very much of an honor for them to have been selected. So we want to congratulate you, and we'll call you up and make a presentation.
We're going to start with the schools, excuse me, with schools and actually call you up in alphabetical order. So first of all, Dryden Elementary, Dr. Jim Myers. And if you'll remain standing up here as we call you the names so we can get pictures. Elton Knob Elementary, Robin Markham. Lee County Career and Technical Center, Crystal Ely. Pennington Middle School, we have co-teachers of the year, Jan Coaklin and Jane Haynes. Recognize the Division Teacher of the Year, and I might say that since we were a little late in getting that person selected, the plaque, the plaque and the shirt that we have for being Division Teacher of the Year will be here a little bit later, but Sheila Mitchell is Lee County Teacher of the Year. Mr. Chadwell said he raised her, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, she has her flag. Okay, next is Public Expression, and first is Sheriff Parsons, who's here to tell us about the drug kit program he's started with the schools and also give us enough data about the county situation.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I talked to Mr. Chadwell about letting you know a little about this drug test program. It was in the paper, and it was publicized, but just a lot of people don't know about it. I think it's a really good program. I hope we can get the word out a little more. But what it is, the paperwork you have there is high, which is a federal agency that funds through our Drug Task Force. They pay for these drug kits, and they're pretty expensive, like a ten panel kit. And that's a pretty big drug test. I think to about sixty dollars a piece if you paid for individual. Parents could come in and use those at no cost whatsoever and test their children. And the only thing is, there's a survey in there. Of course, they can't enforce that, but there's a survey that they ask that you send back as anonymous, so they can keep statistics on what drugs children are using, young people are using. But Mr. Early and Ms. Warner came in and sat with us for thirty minutes, and they had to do a little bit of a training so they can tell the folks about it, come in and get the test. So we had them at the two high schools, and we also had them at our office. And if you folks would be interested, we'd like to put it at the middle schools too, and all that would be required is that the middle schools just send some representative. We'll go to them, do a little thirty minute presentation to them, so they'll know what to tell the parents. It's really a good program, and actually at no cost, a good deterrent. If a kid knows that there's possibility they're going to be drug tested, then, you know, there's certainly going to be a great deterrent there. Of course, all this is anonymous, and the tests are done in-house, they take the test home with them, nothing's done in the school, and no one knows the results, it's just between the child and the parents. So I think it's a great program, and I hope we can get more publicity out about it to let people know about it. Also, this kind of came to light just recently, and the timing's pretty good on it. Of course, the bomb threats we had back three months ago, four months ago, I don't know exactly what the timeline of it was at Pennington Middle School. We haven't heard much about it, but we've been in contact with the FBI since that occurred. And just a few weeks ago, they did a search where in Oklahoma City, recovered a computer that belonged to a thirteen-year-old boy. And that computer has evidence on it that he was in contact with Pennington Middle School. So that's more, I'd say there'll be some national publicity come out on that at some point. But the question is how they're going to proceed with that, because there's jurisdictions in Florida, Pennsylvania, Boston, and not all that information's on that. They're talking about maybe prosecuting it all out of Oklahoma City that way, you know, it's not going all these different jurisdictions. That way, it can be tracked there, and they can handle it. But I'll keep you updated on what happens. But even though it's unofficial, the FBI has confirmed that there was Pennington Gap, Pennington Middle School information there, so no doubt that's the young man that was making the bomb threats. Thank you all for your time.
One question here. In your presentation, say a kid tests positive for drugs, in your presentation was what to do if that happens as far as the school being involved and getting, is that all left up to the parent?
Left up to the parent, and we could not charge, place any charges, do anything based on that test. And I guess that would be something the parent would have to make a decision if they want to notify the school.
Yeah, I wasn't really going down that road. The treatment programs involved for these kids, if they have to miss school and so forth, is that going to be left up to the parents in individual schools?
I guess you'd have to go over your policy, your district policy on that, and they'd have to have some type of doctor's excuse.
Surely they would want to make that.
Yeah. But, you know, if anyone wants to seek out some type of treatment, I'm sure you folks have resources, we do too. We'd be glad to provide the parents.
I know where I was going.
We'd be glad to provide information where they can get some help and some counseling.
Any other question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can I speak to the board? Okay, next is reports. First report is annual retirement dinner. Mr. Carter? The annual retirement dinner for all Lee County public schools retired personnel will be held on Thursday, May the twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, and it will be held at the community center beside the Lee Theater in Pennington Gap, the same place it was held last year. Dinner will be served at six o'clock, and the educators of distinction members will provide a program at six thirty PM. So all school board members are invited, and the program will take place at the community center. Okay, next, advanced ed external review exit report.
We have a letter from Dr. Cheryl Allred, the chairperson of the visiting committee, actually thanking us for hosting the advanced ed external review team and for our hospitality during the time that the team was here, and basically to attending to their needs. They commented that the planning and scheduling helped ensure a smooth visit. As she told the board the day that she gave the exit report, we will be receiving the full written report soon. And she basically was very complimentary of her system and saying it was a pleasure to work with us. So we want to thank the visiting team again, and of course, you have a copy of the exit report that she presented that day, which is just actually a summary, but the actual report should be in any time.
Okay, next is Lee County Career and Technical School Advisory Council request. Mr. Carter? At our last budget meeting, Larry Mosley had asked me if I would present information that the Lee County Career and Technical Advisory Council, which he serves on, that they had sent a letter requesting that the state elected officials approve and actually contribute more funding for career and technical education. He just kind of wanted us to make sure that our board was aware and would certainly support that. Okay, next is enrollments.
Our enrollment as of April was thirty-one hundred students at the end of April. That's up two students from last month and down eighty-two students from this same period last year.
Financial, Ms. Lambert?
This is a summary of our financial activity for the month of April. We received state revenues totaling two million, one hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Federal revenues and reimbursements totaled one hundred twelve thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Local revenues totaled eleven thousand, three hundred four dollars and seventy-seven cents. And insurance payments received totaled three hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. For total revenues of two million, five hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-five cents. As of April thirtieth, we had received sixty-nine point two eight percent of our estimated revenues for the year. Our expenditures for the month of April, general fund payroll and accounts payable totaled two million, seven hundred forty thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and two cents. Total one payroll and accounts payable totaled one hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars and forty-four cents. Head start payroll was eighty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. And insurance payments totaled four hundred, two thousand, nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. For total expenditures in the month of April, a three million, three hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents. As of April thirtieth, we had used sixty-six point five seven percent of our appropriations for the year.
Question? Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Then moving on to action, agenda items. First is the consider approval of Tri-State Chemical and General Supplies. Mr. Carter?
Tri-State Chemical and Paper has agreed to honor their bid for the school system for general supplies effective July one through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, with no increase in pricing, and I would recommend that the board approve that.
I might get a motion. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, next is consider approval of the Right Pest Elimination Contract Renewal.
Right Pest Control has also agreed to extend their pest control services for the fifteen, sixteen school year at the current price with no price increase. I would recommend that we continue with Right Pest Control.
Do you have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, next is consider approval of the Head Start Field Trips. Mr. Carter?
We have two requests from Head Start for field trips for Brights Zoo in Limestone, Tennessee on May the twenty-second, and for Base Mountain Park on May the twenty-ninth. I would recommend approval.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Consider approval of naming the baseball and softball field at Thomas Walker High School to William H. Star and Sports Complex. Mr. Carter?
We have a letter of request from Mr. Early concerning baseball and softball field at Thomas Walker. Mr. William Starrns has donated twelve thousand dollars to the Thomas Walker High School Baseball Athletic Fund in order to help maintain and improve the baseball and the softball facilities at Thomas Walker High School. He has also agreed to match any fundraising by the baseball team and I'm sure the softball team up to five thousand dollars this year and every year thereafter, depending upon the economy. In order for this to officially happen, Mr. Early is recommending that the school board recognize the baseball field and the softball field at Thomas Walker High School as a William H. Starrns Sports Complex.
Any questions? Concerned? I make the motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, could I just interrupt? Well, I think it's important that the sign, since softball is included in this, that the sign be on the baseball and the softball, if it's not already up for the softball, so it's on both sides of it. So both those fields are designated. We get that done?
Mr. Kim, and also, I don't think that word complex should be included in that, because included in that is the football field, which is not included in this thing, so you could limit that to the baseball and softball fields.
It was asked it to be recognized as William H. Starrns Sports Complex.
The letter says baseball and softball. Does that need to be cleared?
The letter does request that the baseball and softball field be named to William H. Starrns Sports Complex. I think that was the intent of Mr. Early for it to be both those fields and only those fields. Is that correct, Mr. Early, since you're here?
With side, I'm sorry.
It's up to you all over what you feel like you need to do there. It's up to you all over what you feel like you need to do there.
Second. Didn't you want to make the motion?
He did.
True, but we're talking about the name on the sign, I guess, and where it's located.
I thought we needed a second.
We needed a second.
Didn't we?
Yep.
So I'm seconding your motion so we can discuss it.
Okay.
Legally.
I think you just did. Yeah, you know, words become a title and I would do the same thing.
Yeah, boys and girls, I understand.
So I'm just saying softball needs to be.
I agree with that.
Up too.
Give a motion and a second. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Next is considered approval of the request for the use of the facilities at Thomas Walker High School. Mr. Carter?
We have a request from Southwest Legends Football Team to use the facilities at Thomas Walker High School. Will be again on May the 30th, June the 6th, 13th and 20th. And the certificate of insurance is on the back of the request.
Okay, have a motion to approve?
I might get motion.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, next is considered approval to amend the local policy LC-G05, which was tabled in the 14th meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, you and the board, you have your policy, your packet, rather, you have a committed policy LC-G05. Speaking to leaves and absences. This policy was crafted a number of years ago by the board, addresses a number of leaves and absences. We presented about this discussed in the May meeting, sorry, excuse me, the April meeting. We've made some revisions to it specifically as addressed to the board. I've also gone through and looked at just cleaning up some of the language for clarity, to provide the board greater flexibility, to ensure the policy is internally consistent, not only with itself, with other policies of the board, both at the local and state level, and importantly, if boards request, strengthen sick leave policy. Be glad to answer any questions the board members may have.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Lucas on page four?
Yes.
Number five and number eight. Those look very, very similar to me. Can you explain really the differences between the two? I mean, word for word, they're not exactly, but it seems like what both of them are saying is the same thing.
Let me look at that in just a moment, Ms. Jesse. I think the item number five speaks to the reporting of duty, reporting for duty, rather, at any time in connection with terms of that employee's terms of employment, which could begin anytime during the year. Number eight speaks to the regular school term, presumably mid-August reporting day for teachers. Probably five and eight could be rewritten to combine, to combine those two provisions into one. There are some slight differences. I can envision some situations where you're going to have an employee who is going to be hired in mid-year. Paragraph five would speak to that, but we could probably at some point write some language to address both those situations.
That's, I could see that there was some similarity in things, but some...
Probably in drafting, it would have been better if I had added one sentence to number five and to number eight.
The other one is, and I noticed this has been an addition in our policy, that employees may accumulate up to 90 days of sick leave.
That's correct. State policy requires that teachers be permitted to accumulate a minimum of 90 days. State policy does not require any minimum accrual bank of sick leave for employees other than teachers. Most of our employer clients are limiting the amount of sick leave that can be accrued. Previously, the school board has not limited the accrual of sick leave.
And I am against that, by my own hand. I think we need to remove that statement. Because I feel like we are reducing the employees' benefits. We're asking them to do so much more and more with so little incentive. So if that statement stays in, I'll be voting against it.
Any other questions? Anyone else?
Do you have a motion to approve? That presented?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I call attention to the fact that right now employees, their sick days are, they can accumulate them unlimited. And this would put a 90-day limit on the number of days that an employee could accumulate. So I don't know if that's an issue, but it does restrict something that is currently not restricted.
And as a matter of law, the board can set whatever cap it would like or can continue with no cap and all. With respect to teachers, you cannot set a cap below 90.
If you not set a cap below what?
You could not set a cap below 90 for teachers.
I'll make the motion to approve the policy with the exception or deletion of the employees may accumulate up to 90 days of sick leave.
Okay. Have a motion, do you have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay. Motion passed. Back to Lucas. Next is to consider approval to renew the insurance coverage for the 2015, 2016 school year. Mr. Carter? Ms. Lambert?
I'm going to back her up.
I request permission to tag him in whenever I need him. I'm on the agenda for the next four items, so I might have to tag him a couple times. We received three options for our property and casualty, student accident insurance and workers' compensation for 2015, 16 school year. You should have a copy of this in your packet. If you'll go to the third page over, there is option one and the contribution is, for premiums, is $401,46. As you know, this has resulted because of our horrible payouts we've had the past couple of years due to the roof and gym floor damages. This policy, or this option one, will provide actual cash value coverages on all roofs with no maintenance or replacement records since '95 and most of our roofs fall under that category. The actual cash value is the replacement cost minus depreciation, which means we are going to recoup very little from the insurance company if we have a catastrophic roof fall. The deductible on the remaining facets of the property is $1,000 and this option one is $166,000 more than what we're currently paying on our insurance. If you'll turn to the next page, option two is $21,028 in addition to what we are paying this current year and this is the option I plugged into the budget. We're going to look at it in a few minutes. On this option under property, there will be a $100,000 deductible that will apply to any roof claim regardless of the cause or resulting damage. The other policy I would bring your attention to, student accident, we would begin having a $250 deductible that parents would be responsible for paying when a child has an incident at school. That contribution for that policy has increased about $10,000. And the total contribution for option two is $263,659. If you turn to option three on the next page, there's only $9,500 between that and option two. But the big difference here is on the student accident insurance, we'd have a $500 deductible that we would ask of parents before anything is paid out and that's why we plugged in option two for the budget. The total contribution on that option is $254,228. I will do my best to answer any questions if you have them.
I might add that it's our recommendation that you consider option two, which has a $100,000 deductible on any roof claim regardless of cause or resulting damage. And that is a significant increase from our current policy of $1,000 deductible. But because of, as Denise said, our recent claims with roofs and with gym floors, I don't think our insurance company is going to even begin to look at a policy like we currently have without a significant increase as they provided for in option one. Did provide the board with a copy of some recommendations that the insurance has asked that we consider and their maintenance department has those and are working on those. They'll be found right behind the packet with the, that's stapled together with the insurance, its priority recommendations. And this has been provided by Bayford, our insurance carrier and we certainly are going to start working on those as quickly as we can to comply with all the recommendations that we physically can that they've recommended. And they have indicated to us that we will do that and make sure that we work with them, that they will look at possibly reducing this $100,000 deductible, probably not for this coming year, but if we work this coming year to make sure that these recommendations are completed, they will look next year at possibly lowering the $100,000 deductible on the roofs if we follow those recommendations. And certainly we have every intention of trying to do that, get this deductible lowered back down to close to where it's at now.
Is this what they, is this what they found when they came in here, these recommendations?
It is.
When they went to the school?
Yes.
And how much more is option two now than it was? Could you give us a figure?
$21,000.
$21,000?
That's with $100,000 deductible on any roof.
And a $250 deductible for parents on student accident insurance, which they currently do not have.
They do not have deductible at this time.
But option three is a five, the only difference between option two and option three is the deductible that parents would pay on a student accident and option three is a $500 deductible that parents would have to pay. And we feel like for the difference, I mean, we feel like it's worth us to go ahead and go with option two to make that a $250 deductible because if a parent doesn't have insurance, that's a significant amount that we pay anyway.
Do you remember the number of student claims we had? I can't remember off the top of my head.
I do.
Several.
There were several, yes, but I do not have that.
And this year that has been a concern, Mr. Tweak, for our insurance companies, the number of student accidents.
My members discussed that at the budget meeting. I just, we just wanted to let all the board members know that it was a very high amount.
Right.
More than you would expect.
It was, and I think part of that stems from where we live because we're not in a place where we have a lot of people who are insured and we're hoping that the Affordable Care Act can help with that since everybody's supposed to be insured. So we'll see how that goes. Maybe that would provide us some relief with the student accident insurance.
But option two is what we have in the budget and it would be our recommendation that the board approve option two.
I might get motion.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, next is considerable approval of the 2015, 2016 health insurance plan. Ms. Lambert?
Okay. We finally received our renewal information from Anthem and here's what our situation looks like for 2015, 16. Our renewal came in at $5,647,91. Our rates, this is the, what's contributed by the employees for the premiums. We increased that or asked our consultant to increase those premiums by $10 per month and that gave us income toward the renewal of $4,244,148, which leaves us a projected shortfall of $820,643. The savings we have looked at for 2015, 16. Increasing the ER and outpatient copay to $200, it's currently $100 would give us savings of $14,526. We would remain with the Keep Care 20 plan, but our out-of-pocket increases from $2,400 to $3,507,000. And this does now include pharmaceuticals. That's a savings of $125,893. We would have $150,000 specific stock loss, gives us savings of $33,894. And if we go with the pharmaceutical plan of $15,4075 and a 20% copay on the tier three or four and a $150 deductible, that would give us savings of $188,840. For total savings of $363,154. That reduces our shortfall to $457,489. Last week, the employees were polled on if they were willing to give up the Delta Dental that's included with the Anthem in lieu of a much higher increase in premiums and a majority of the employees did. So that would save us an additional $167,948, bringing our shortfall to $289,541. Did I omit anything? Leave anything out?
The only thing I can think of is on the $150 deductible on prescription plan, the $150 deductible only applies to tier two, three and four drugs. It would not apply to generics, so. But other than that, I don't know if anything else you left out. You did actually a superb job covering it. It's just that last year, we had about a $200,000 hit to our insurance fund. We're looking at a projected $300,000 this year to our fund and they are, next year to be about $800,000. And that's why we certainly can't continue to go down the path that we're on. We've got to try to bring, you know, our premiums back in line or contributions to the fund back in line with, you know, what cost is. Of course, we've had this past year, three really large claims that, you know, hit the fund pretty hard. But of course, that's the purpose of insurance. That's why we carry it for those folks who need it.
Mr. Chairman, I want to ask you again about the dental plan.
Yes.
The dental plan, if we approve it that way, is dropped, right? But they have the option, do they, to pick it up? But they have the option, do they, to pick it up individually?
Yes, they have the option to pick it up individually, but not...
Not through Anthem?
No, not through Anthem.
The reason I say that is I had several teachers call me, and I'd say it this way, but it was the blind eating the blind almost on that. So many of them wanted the plan, but felt like that was excessive amount of money for what they could possibly save. So they do have the option to buy that, is correct?
Not through Anthem.
Not through Anthem?
They will not have that option.
Okay, they can't put it on the roof plan.
Right, that's right. They would go out for it as an individual.
Okay.
Which would be, Mr. Chair, so...
But that would revert back to what we had prior to Delta Dental becoming part of the health insurance.
That's right. That's right. We could purchase that policy as individuals, and we did have payroll deduction for it, but it was not a part of Anthem.
Anyone else? Any more comments, Ms. Lambert? Okay. Kate, do you have a motion to approve the health insurance plan for next year?
Hesitantly, I move that we approve the health insurance plan with the removal of Delta Dental.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consider approval of the proposed 2015-2016 school budget, Ms. Lambert?
Right. In your packet, you have a copy of the budget proposal for 2015-16. I'll just go over a few highlights of it and take questions after that. This budget is based on a projected ADM of 3,067 students, which is the state's projection, and unfortunately, close to what Mr. Miles has projected here for our enrollment for next year. This is a decrease from 3,180, but this year's budget was built on. Our state revenues have decreased by 585,000, which also reduces the local match by 161,797. On the second page of the revenues, under federal revenues, I just want to point out a new line item we have, which is E-Rate Category Two Equipment. This is an opportunity we have to improve a lot of our infrastructure for technology. We will receive an 80% reimbursement on what we spend in this project, so it's sort of an offer too good to refuse, but it's not the best budget year to have to plug that expenditure in. However, it's use it, or you don't get an opportunity to pick it back up in the future. Down, just a few lines above the bottom, our required local effort based on state funds is $4,878,669, which is a decrease of almost $162,000 over the current budget. We are requesting funding above that in the amount of $1,460,257. For total funding requests from the governing body of $6,338,926. This brings our total budget to $40,426,963. The next page is your expenditures, first page. Salaries are calculated to give a one-and-a-half percent raise as it's supposed to be funded by the General Assembly. That did raise the FICA and VRS slightly, and we did plug in an increase in what the board pays toward insurance. That is a $130,000 increase. Expenditures, page two, we plug in the option two insurance, which is an increase of $21,028 over the current year. We have two buses planned. This year, we only had one in the budget, which increased at $96,066. And of the expenditure side, the E-Rate Category Two Equipment is $485,700. That is a total expenditure of $40,426,963. The other pages after the budget is a printout of the state budget showing what our ADM is projected for 2016 and the funds based on that ADM. And the final piece of that packet is the superintendent's memo related to funds permitted to be carried forward from fiscal year 2015 to 2016, so that if we are good stewards of our money and our locality agrees to reappropriate those funds, we could carry over any remaining funds at year end, as long as the locality has met their requirement. And that's all I have.
I have a couple, Mr. Chair. Denise, on the VRS contribution?
Yes.
Well, I know when salaries go up, of course, that would go up, but didn't the General Assembly approve some money to go toward the VRS so that the rate would kind of go down a little bit?
The rate did go down slightly. Very slightly.
And the second, on the second page there, under... With the telecommunications, a lot of that was the E-Rate. With the other category with E-Rate, will that cause any adjustment in that?
No. Sorry.
Anyone else? Kate, do you have a motion to approve the school budget, the 2015-2016 school year?
Take the motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Next is reports and recommendations of the board, Mr. Williams.
Yes, I have two things. One, been asked by the town of Pennington, and the road took much of the... Took all of the baseball field at Pennington Middle School, some of the other area there, and also took a portion of the football field. And they have some plans underway that they've been working on, and I'm talking about the town when I say this, as to upgrade those facilities out there, which they've already done a lot. They fill some in and so forth. And there is a building that is sitting there that was a driver's ed building that has been a pain for the school back when it was a high school there. It would never allow them to put seats on that side of the stadium there. And the building is pretty well... The roof is pretty well rotted off, and it's used for nothing right now, except they've got a few pads in there, I think, from the football team that could be moved pretty easily. The town is wanting to upgrade and put some bathrooms out there and so forth for the Little League Football. Some of the athletic teams play out there. Soccer is going to be out there and is out there, and they need bathrooms because they have nowhere out there to go. Now, all I'm asking for tonight is, and I know Mr. Harbor is... He can check anything that I've said wrong here. I know he's aware of it. But they want to tear that building down, and I certainly would be in favor for it and get it out of that place. And if they did, they could expand that field a little bit, use it for several things that they could, not now. And I think that this would be no expenditure to the Lee County School Board or anything, but it is on the school board property there. Did I say anything wrong?
No.
You're good. And then I'd like to make a motion that we do that.
Also, a second there. Mr. Glass has said that he would take that building down for us unless he runs into asbestos problems, which he doesn't think he will. Like I say, there'd be no... Nothing on us.
It's built for driver education, by the way. And used one year.
Anything else, please? Okay, that's not on the agenda. We can go ahead and approve that if everybody's in favor of it.
We need to amend the agenda.
As long as you have a motion to waive the rules.
Can I have a motion to waive the rules?
You haven't spoke.
Motion, okay. Now, does anyone object to...
I have a second to have a motion to waive the rule.
Okay. Motion, have a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, we have a motion to tear the building down. Have a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do you have anything, Mr. Harbor?
I do. I'd like to thank the... Everybody that worked on the budget for all the hours spent and the time spent and so forth. I appreciate every bit of effort that went into that, both Denise, Mr. Carter, and the Budget Committee, and certainly Larry and Dane and Mr. Baden. That's all.
Mr. Chair, excuse me. I said I had two things, and I don't...
I need to go through them.
No, I know what I'm doing. I wish that we could do something. I've served on this board now, going on the fourth year. Every time that we are putting a percentage raise, in my opinion, we're hurting Lee County and everybody else. These poor old secretaries and these 12-month secretaries and these custodians are getting further and further out of the realm. Every one of us knows that individually. I've probably talked to everybody, and every one of them would like to do something, but we never seem to get around to doing anything for it. I would like to know if it's possible for us to adopt something or other and send to our state, asking them if we couldn't figure a way to get straight across the board raises. Because I just hate to vote when I know that the ones who make the most money are getting the biggest raises, and we're leaving... It's bad for me when a person is working 12 months a year and doing the hard work that there is in school, and some of them making less than $20,000. So I'd like to know if there's something that we could do as far as adopting something and sending it to the... To our state representatives and so forth, and to hand these raises down for our budgets or something. And if not that, is there a way that we could find any money that we could find and give them another boost in or change that salary scale for them and catch them up just a little bit? I'm for the little man, is what I'm trying to say. And as long as we continue with giving percentages, it's going to get worse and worse, and the difference. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to express my appreciation to all of those who were involved in the advanced ed review, and also appreciation and thanks to our teachers, since last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. I wish there were more that we could give you besides words of thanks. I'll find a $100,000 bar and give that to you. Just a question, since it has been in the news in a neighboring county about serving old meat to our students. Do we have a process in place that nothing like that happens here?
We do have, yes. Our stock is rotated, and we do keep close tabs on that. So I honestly don't believe that that will ever be a problem here.
Okay, good. I would like to congratulate the Teachers of the Year at the schools, and also a suggestion that the two-to-three-minute presentation that each of the schools did for advanced ed be shown as part of our school board meeting.
I know you've mentioned that, and we can do that. We're just actually... What we're planning on doing is getting that presentation back together and actually recording it, putting it on places on our website, so we can ask each school to come, take turns, and do that. We did a... Actually, I did an overview of the division, and I guess it was probably the longest, but we could start with the schools. They're certainly very short, the division overview, and we'll...
I've heard they're very good.
They are very good. I'm telling you, they...
And I think we need to publicize that.
They are very good, and we do plan on placing that on our website once we get it recorded.
And finally, I wish the students well as they begin to get involved in their upcoming SOL days. Thank you.
Mr. Twigg?
Are you ready for this? Okay, well, I'd like, first of all, to congratulate those FCC LA students and their sponsor for all their hard work and all their accomplishments. And, you know, I'd like to reiterate what Debbie said about the Teacher of the Year from each school, and congratulate them, and our county representative or County Teacher of the Year. I think, you know, I think all the teachers do a great job, and I'm really pleased with that. But also, I think I would like to say what Mr. Williams... Reiterate on what Mr. Williams said about the secretaries and things. I think we did make some provisions in the budget. Am I correct, you know, given the lower salaried employees...
Well, not rather than a percentage. We looked at the option of giving flat amounts.
A flat rate rather than a percentage. And I think it's going to... It's a pretty significant amount, I think, overall. The best we could do with what the budget's providing. So we did look at that, Mr. Williams, so I think that'll please you. Also, you know, with... I want to bring up something. Like you said, this is just a recommendation of the board. This is nothing that, of course, we have to do, but I would like to look at maybe a four- or five-year plan, and I wish the board would really think about this. I think we need to apply for money through the Army Corps of Engineers, Rural Development Grants, and anybody available to get money, because, as you've known, for the past several years, our enrollment is decreasing. And that... And the problem with that is we're having to keep the same number of students at each school, and I know that's difficult. But my recommendation to the board, and to the board of supervisors in the county, although I probably won't be here to, you know, help with it much, but I think in the long run, we need to make... Pennington Middle School and Elementary, Johnton Middle School and Elementary, try to get some grant money together and build a new middle school, and just have four schools this and the county. And I think that way, we could absorb a lot of positions that would meet the needs of our county. And I mean, believe me, I hate closing schools, but at the same time, I think we're in a position where we need to really look at that countywide. I think it'll save us money in the long run, and I just hope the board would consider, you know, some of these things, looking in, you know, looking into some of these grants. As mentioned to me, that we might be able to get a lot of funding through the Army Corps of Engineers, because St. Charles Elementary is still on a floodplain, so... But that's just something to look down the road. And on top of that, you know, our newest school in the county is Lee High School, and it's showing some wear and tear. And if it's showing some wear and tear, you can imagine what's going on at some of these schools that are 15, 16 years old. And like I said, it's just a recommendation. It's not something that we're going to act on, I'm sure, this year, and... But I think we need to maybe have a four- or five-year plan to make some changes in our buildings throughout the county. And one other thing, I would like to thank all the board supervisors and Denise and Mr. Carter. The budget is very tight, again. Seems like it gets worse every year. And it's a lot of hard work, and I appreciate all the time and effort they put into it. And I appreciate the board and supervisors listening to our concerns and also their input. And I hope, you know, we have a good resolution to our upcoming budgets. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tweak. Mr. Harbor, will you read us into executive session?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to consider Personnel Section 2.2-3711A1, Contract Matters Section 2.2-3711A6, Impending and Threatened Litigation Section 2.2-3711A7, Dakota, Virginia.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion.